Perfect, I'm so.
Absolutely.
You do a QR code.
Aaron, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, yeah.
We're just waiting a second to get going and check.
We can print it out and then they can scan it. Or if they want to, they can just go on there and then they automatically get a.
Right.
Let's say they give a thirty percent discount. We've got it.
Because why would you tell them? Like, so we make sure that they're doing it. They become a part of it.
Go ahead. Great, it is three oh one on August twenty seventh. And our meeting of the EOAB is called to order. Is recorded. Uh, let's start by just going around and doing introductions.
Chris Wilson, member of the board.
Forrest Rogers, member of the board from the county.
Randy Martin, member of the board, representing the Moab County Chamber of Commerce.
I'm just a civilian non-voting in this meeting. Uh, my name is Cora, I'm the executive director for the Moab Chamber of Commerce.
I'm just a civilian as well. I'm Todd Thompson, I work for the Small Business Development Center. I'm at the USU campus.
I'm Samantha Campbell, I'm the interim associate vice president of the USU Moab Campus. And I'm also civilian.
Brittany, non-voting.
Thanks, thanks for being here.
Melissa.
Melissa Jeffers, representing Grand County Economic Development. Melody McCamlass, Grand County Commissioner, non-voter. Me is on.
Uh, I'm Aaron Lindberg, member of the board.
And Deborah, I see.
Deborah McKee, Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity.
Thanks, welcome. Uh, let's see, Jasmine, uh, looks like you just joined, we're just doing introductions. Let's try Cory for an introduction.
Good afternoon, everyone, this is Cory, uh, city of Moab Community Development Department. And I will be remote for just a moment, I'm trying to get to home office. So hopefully, well, I'll be off for about thirty minutes during that drive. And then I'll, I'll be plugging back in, but here for now, thanks.
Thanks Cory. And Jasmine, just doing introductions.
Jasmine Duncan, member of the board.
Thank you. And it looks like back to the room, Brittany.
Brittany Melton, a member of the board.
Great, thanks. Um, all right. So, I think in terms of presentations, general business items, we just would start then with the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. July thirtieth. Anybody on the board want to move to approve those minutes?
Sure.
Moved, do I have second?
Oh, second.
And seconded by Randy, so moved by Forrest, seconded by Randy, all in favor approving the minutes from July thirtieth? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, one abstent from Brittany because she wasn't here. But otherwise unanimously approved, great. Um, okay, so next item on the agenda is update from the Economic Development Office. Uh, Melissa, that's you.
Hi. So the biggest thing to report on is the status of the RCOG grant, obviously. We've got a timing thing that we're pushing really hard. And everyone has pulled together to try everything possible to ensure that MACGOL is able to contract terms early. Um, everyone has gotten behind it at a county level, anything that could be done with the MACGOL board has been done. And with Deborah's assistance, we have filed an intent to apply with GOEO so that we didn't miss that deadline. So we have submitted the intent to apply, already had the feedback meeting with James Dixon, that went really well. He and Deborah were able to give some good feedback. And I have to say, I would let Deborah correct this if it's not accurate. But it was my perception from James that the project is really well received. And that he thought it was a really great project. Obviously, it's a competitive grant, so that doesn't necessarily mean that it would be received, but he seemed to have really positive feedback and then some good things for us to be able to address and correct in the application process. So that has been done. So that if we're able to complete the project and they're able to report and do that final report within the reporting time period, then we should still be able to submit an application. So it is a wing and a prayer and a push. And if, if it doesn't get across the finish line, it won't be because of attention or you know, anyone dropping a ball, it definitely is on everyone's radar. It will just be because we couldn't complete it within the time constraints and the way that those contracts were, were lacking. So I feel really good about that.
Well, thanks for your work on that, Melissa, that's great news that we're, I mean, even though we don't like know a hundred percent that we're gonna get to the finish line, that we're pushing as hard as we can to get there is really good to hear.
We absolutely are, and I feel like MACGOL has pushed really hard, the county has pushed really hard. Uh, we were able also to close out all of our RCG, uh, individual reporting on the last one. And got the new submission and applications in, and those were accepted. And now we're just in contract review. And I believe that that's on the commission for ratification at the next meeting, I'm pretty sure. So, yeah.
Meaning the contracts, uh, between the county and the, those receiving grants?
No, between the county and the state.
For the, to receive the money from the state.
Yeah, so, uh, Stephen Stox has had that for review and uh, should, uh, be able to ratify it with the county coming up.
With us on the next agenda.
I, I think, I swear, I think it is, but I haven't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Cora. Great. Thanks Melissa. Anything else that you wanted to talk about, or is that good for now?
No, but I think, I mean, hopefully we have good news and I hope that we have a lot more to talk about next meeting in the form of, you know, we were able to get it across the finish line. It would be really a bummer to miss it, and also, like I said, it wouldn't be because of lack of effort. People have been amazing.
That's a great project and, and it's been together real well. Uh, great, the, um, I was going to see if we could maybe switch up the order of things. Uh, I think Todd and SBC, SBDC update was later on the agenda, but I know you have to get to another meeting at some point here today. So maybe we can just turn to that now. Randy suggested, and it's a great idea, that we see if Todd could talk to us a little bit more about work at SBDC. Um, and just give us a bit of an update on status report. Um, and then I was just reviewing, you know, our goals for the year. And we've made really either finished, completed many of our goals, like having a staff person rehired at the Economic Development County. Having a successful RCG process, we just talked about the RCOG process. Um, and then we have the work that we're, is ongoing on strategic planning. Um, but one of the last things on the list was sort of like building our relationships with key economic development actors in the county and in the region. And I feel like the relationship that having Todd be coming to our meetings is awesome. Um, and we're, you know, really happy and, and want to keep deepening that relationship. Also just wanted to say, we're gonna have next month folks from, uh, Serta come down, the Regional Development Office, uh, including the person who runs the revolving loan fund. So we'll get an update and sort of, and an opportunity to just figure out how we can better engage with them and all the opportunities that that represents. They are the agency who set us up as a region of southeast Utah with the Economic Development Agency as well, so the federal government. And through that, there are funding opportunities available. So in addition to that, Melissa and I also are scheduling a call, um, with the regional coordinator of the USEDA. And so we'll see if that leads to them coming and participating in a meeting, or if they're just sharing information and we sort of help disseminate that out. But there's definitely additional sort of funding opportunities, engagement opportunities with the USEDA that we're gonna be pursuing as well as part of this plan, sort of trying to bring in, you know, an all hands on deck sort of approach to economic development here in Grant County. Um, so anyway, with that, let me pass it over to you Todd.
I, I do know this, um, from Serta, I do know that Corinne Olson comes down, or she comes over here, I think she comes about, I think she comes once a month. So if you do have any questions about the revolving loan fund, um, or about Serta and what they're doing, I know that she's here and that you can communicate with her as well. Um, we don't necessarily vote on anything that goes with the revolving loan fund, but I will tell you, I do sit. We're kind of the gatekeepers before they give their presentation um, to the board, to the revolving loan fund board. And so we have one going through from our county, um, I believe today. Um, they're presenting today, and so, um, and I will hear back about, um, what funding they're going to get from the revolving loan front, from, from Grand County. Um, and they should, according to what their business model shows, they should employ four or five people off the money that they're going to get, at least. And so it's not necessarily just about the money that they're getting, but it's about the people that they're going to employ. Um, and really helping the people in our county with something new and something different, and it has nothing to really do with tourism. Um, they're an appliance company, so their business model is really cool. And so, um.
Yeah, Corinne's part of the team that's gonna be with us.
Yeah, Corinne, yeah. And if you're buying, you know, appliances that may be a little bit scratched or dinged, you'll be buying it from them, so. Um, that may be a hint of who they are. And once they're done getting their funding, then I can start speaking about them with you, so. Um, but they've lived in the community for many years, um, her the park owner is the person that will come in and fix any of your appliances. Um, and so it's, it's really cool. So, um, just to kind of let you know what we're doing here. A lot of what I'm doing is people will come in and they, um, need help with funding. Um, they need help putting a business plan together, they need help putting their financials together. Uh, they need help with marketing. Um, so one of the things that we do and that I'm doing is I'm helping them create their business plans, I'm helping create their financials. I'm talking to them about the different grants available, I'm talking about the different loans available to them. Um, I work very well with Desert Rivers Credit Union. And so, and just to kind of let you know, when they go in to see someone, like a banking consultant or somebody that they're trying to get money from, or they want money lent to them, they're not, you know, Lonnie Campbell at Desert Rivers is not gonna help them build a business plan or create a business plan. Or a business model or anything. So what we're, what I do is I help them create that. If they need three years of financials, what you'll find is people will even put a business plan together where they'll have three numbers. Like this year, I'm gonna make two hundred and fifty thousand, next year I'm gonna make two seventy-five, and the year after I'm gonna make three hundred. But they don't know how they're going to do that, or what that looks like. And even what a business plan looks like. And so for them to go to a bank, they need a lot of information. And so we're helping them get that information. Um, and one of the thing, what, what great thing that we do is I'm one of sixteen people, or even more, one of twenty-one or twenty-two. So even if we're doing marketing research, I don't do the marketing research. I have a guy named Rob Head, he does the marketing research, he's out of Salt Lake City, he's our marketing guru. Um, and so for example, we're working with a company in San Juan, and he's doing all the marketing research for that company. And so.
Marketing and market.
Yeah, marketing and market research. So not just the marketing, but the market research.
Yeah, because it worth doing.
Yeah, and so, yeah, should they do it?
Yeah.
You know, are they gonna make any money out of it? Um, and so, you know, it's, you know, we've got a really good group of, of individuals that will help them, kind of like you said, it's just not marketing, it's market research. Thank you for, for that. Um, and so we're really helping them in any way that we can. Um, you know, an example is I'm working with, um, a Spanish couple who wants to, um, open up a food trailer. Um, they came in to me and I asked them to write a business plan, I sent them a template and they wrote seven sentences in Spanish. And, and so, um, for me to do business plans and financials, it takes me a long time. Like I was with one, I met with a, a person about a week and a half ago, and I spent about six hours on her financials this morning. Um, and so it's, 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 it's very, um, laborious, um, to get everything that I need to help these people out. If they're asking for a four hundred thousand dollar loan or a hundred thousand dollar loan, you know, some of them may come and you know, with the Economic Assistance Grant that's gonna be available September first. Um, I know that they switched from August first, so just trying to help people get the funding that they need. Um, it's just, yeah, just, and I'll, I'll stop talking after this, but just to let you know, like, for example, I'm working with a company and looking at their numbers from twenty-three to twenty-four, they're down about twenty-four percent from twenty-four. And so I think that that's some of the things that we need to look at and we need to be concerned with. So if they made five hundred and forty in twenty-three and they made four hundred and seventy in twenty-four, you know, that's about a twenty percent, a fifteen percent reduction of what they did. And so that's just one of the businesses, and they're here in Moab. They're, they work here in Moab, it's not a hotel that their owners live in Texas or Arizona. And they don't really care about our community, they don't care about the real growth of our community with some of our small businesses. And so that's really what we're concerned about, we're concerned about giving them funding and about the number of jobs they're gonna bring to the community. All right, sorry.
No, no, thanks for that. Could you still, kind of like, what, just thinking in terms of all the connections and folks that we're all in contact with, like, what's the right kind of business or people wanting to start a business to refer to you? Like, what are the size businesses that you work with? So, I mean, but really, like, you're working with the largest employers in Grand County? Or you're working with businesses that don't exist yet, or like, where in between those two is the right size?
Like the last two I talked about, I mean, I'm working with one, they started their business in two thousand and eighteen. I'm working with another one that started their business in two thousand and twenty-two. I'm working with multiple that are just starting their business. And so, so they're new business, but even the one in two thousand and twenty-two, I mean, it's a newer business, but their doors have been opened.
Yeah.
Um, the one I was talking to you about that is getting the revolving loan fund, they've been in business, they've had different businesses. They're creating another business, but they've been in business now in Moab for the last eight to ten years, they're just, they're just, um, branching out to something different.
Yeah, so it's mostly.
But, yeah, I mean, they are new.
That are trying to grow something new that they need funding for.
Yeah. And, I mean, I, you know, I, I trained a business like on leadership and management and how to manage their employees. I mean, I've sat and trained, um, I, that was Moonflower, I sat with their manager and I sat with all of their man, or I sat with their, the store manager and I sat with all their managers on how, you know, how to manage themselves and how to manage their employees. And so I trained them how to do that. So outside of that kind of business and stuff like that, we also, we also train people on how to manage their employees. And so, I don't know how I did, they seemed to like it. They didn't, they didn't throw tomatoes and eggs at me, so.
So I have a question.
But they would have been organic.
Yeah, sure.
I'm still trying to understand this, so you have a revolving loan fund that basically anybody can come and apply for.
Well, they can, but they have to be turned down by a primary lender like a bank. They can't just go to the revolving.
Somebody that doesn't really, couldn't qualify for a loan.
Well, it, a lot, some of them, like for example, their debt to income, some of the people that I work with, um, they just can't qualify because a lot of these companies, they own businesses. And the reason why they're trying to get funding is because they want to scale their business. They want to grow their business. And if you have a company that they've been in, let's say, business for five to seven to ten years, and they have an LLC, they're running everything through their LLC, so they're not messing, they're trying to save on taxes, they're not trying to, so, so their, their debt to income may seem to be high. Um, but again, too, we can, we can have them go to the revolving loan fund, that doesn't mean they're gonna get that money.
Okay.
Um, but if they're turned down by, let's say, a bank, they're not provided that. We get, we send, we, we do the paperwork that the revolving loan fund requires them to do. Um, they can go and present their plan, we help them with it, we help them with financials and with everything. Um, but they still have to be approved by the revolving loan fund committee.
Are there any numbers on that back that say, oh, this is fantastic and we push these people to the limits here and they're awesome? Or are we seeing that they're running out of business again? Because they're not, do you see if they're successful? Yeah, are they successful?
Another way to think of it is like, your kid, my kid, doesn't have credit history. But let's say he has a business idea. And, or you ran it as an LLC, or you set it up some way, or you don't have enough equity in the company. Or, like, it's, the bank standard, getting a loan from a bank to start a business is really, really difficult.
To answer the first question is, you're helping new people.
Right.
Not established ones.
Well, the, the, like, the companies that I'm helping right now, I mean, I'm help, I've, I've helped them along the way, I mean, there's, there's newer companies. Like the company that's going to do the revolving loan fund today. Um, they're not, they're, that part of their business is new. Um, but they've had business here prior. Um, but I helped them create their business plan, I helped them create all their financials, I looked at what they're doing. And their business model is a good business model. Um, they're from our community, they've been around, I mean, if I could show you what their financials look like.
Yeah.
But I've gotta be very cautious, I can't, yeah. I'm not allowed to share a lot of information, um, about this, I wish I could. But their financials and, and everything that we helped them put together, because just to let you know, before they go to the revolving loan fund committee, we meet as a group with them, there's like eight to ten of us. Um, we have people that work at banks, we have other people that work at SBDC. So we have other individuals, um, that will meet with them and making sure that what they, what we've put together for them makes sense. And if it doesn't make sense, they're not gonna get a loan. Like, we worked with somebody not from our county, um, and when we met with him, it didn't make sense. The plan that he put together, he doesn't live here, he lives somewhere else. It just didn't make sense, it didn't make sense to me, it didn't make sense to anyone else. So he wasn't afforded the opportunity, so, but we don't necessarily die on the vine with, with the revolving loan fund.
So how big is that fund?
Um, you're at about four eighty here in the county.
And then we're gonna get an update from the person who runs the revolving loan fund, the regional one, is coming next month, we're gonna talk to her.
The first bank I applied for when I was twenty-seven years old to run this bike manufacturing plant, they said, we will give you the money, but you need to put up the exact same amount of money that we're doing. They come up with these hoops to jump through that are like, well, this is, if I can get the money from someone else, why would I get it from you? And so I just went and got a private investor. So the bank threshold is super high. If they want to invest in things, the regular traditional bank threshold, if they want to invest in things that are. If they want to invest in things, the regular traditional bank threshold, if they wanna invest in things that are almost a sure thing. They want your debt to equity ratio to be perfect, they want you to be, at, at, at the time that you can get a bank loan, you usually don't need one because you're already making a profit. So this is a real opportunity to help local people start a business. Like your example of your guy, your kid with the lawn loan business, like, he's, he's not gonna look real good on paper.
This is a loan, this is not.
Right, and so they've gotta be able to pay it back, but it's just their standards.
And what's the, what's the rule around when they don't pay it back?
Like anything.
They'll be like anything, they'll go after them, there'll be a default and they'll go after them. Uh, you know, one of the things too is that, that's not only, that's, we try to get them funded in any, any, in any way we can. We try to push them towards grants, like.
Can you talk about that a little bit? Like, I was gonna ask, my question was gonna be, what are the, some of the products that you're most connecting folks with? So obviously the revolving loan fund is one of the products that you're connecting folks with. I think like, like SB, um, SBA loans.
Like SBA loans, you know, you've got the Utah Small Business Credit Initiative loans. We, we push them towards those. Um, like, you have, one of those loans goes anywhere from ten thousand to twenty million. Another one goes about the same to twenty thousand to five million. So we're pushing towards. Those people that I'm working with right now, two of them, I'm not pushing them towards the revolving loan fund, I'm pushing them towards other type of funding. And then we also look at grants, like the Economic Assistance Grant, we'll push that, that opens up Sep- September first, so I'll push them to that grant as well. And I've already spoken to them about that. So if there's other funding that we can get them, not just necessarily the revolving loan fund. We're, we're trying to provide them opportunity in any way that we can. But to sit there and say, okay, well, you can't get a regular bank loan, like you said, you can't come up with forty percent. So, we're not gonna do any work with you, we're not gonna try to help you at all in our community. You know, I think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. Um, if these people wanna come in and wanna make a difference in our community, wanna hire four or five employees, but we're gonna say, no, we don't, no, we don't want you. I mean, if we have people that have lived in our community for ten or fifteen years and they have a really good business idea, they're from here, they own homes here. Um, you know, and I can't go like Melissa says, I can't really go into one of them, but they own a home here, they have children that go to our school.
Yeah.
And so all I'm saying is, is, you know, they're not somebody coming from the outside, they're not somebody that is not local, looking for any type of funding here. But we're doing the best that we can in SBDC to make sure that, you know, we don't necessarily just look at. Um, you know, the money that we're trying to get them, but we're also looking at what they're gonna provide for our county and for our community. But just to let you know, I'm working with one company and they can't find employees. They've gone through over the past two years thirteen employees, and they can't keep them. And the reason why is because it costs a lot of money to live in Moab. And so if you're paying people twenty-five or thirty dollars an hour, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to have a lot of people living in a house. So, um, but we're doing, like, I, I, I'm busy, I, you know, I get to work early and I, I try to do the best I can to be able to help. People as much as I can, so.
So on those grants, do you get to, do you, do you fill them out for them and help them through that? Rather than like, cause like, it sounds like you're doing all of the financials a different sum for people, so are you doing that same thing for the grants?
Yeah, like, there's a, there's, like, there's a three thousand dollar grant we work with through Weber State, it's not a lot of money, but. The price, three thousand dollars is three thousand dollars, so, you know, I've, I've helped, you know, one, it's a process, people have to go through a process, it's not easy. I can't do it all for them, and so a lot of times they'll get frustrated. And so, um, you know, but I've had one finally go through, she presented in front of three people and they loved her presentation. And so she got three thousand dollars, but, you know, if it's a very, very, very small business, it's, if it's a business starting out, well, that's gonna buy. Office equipment, um, and it really, you know, it, it put her on her way, and that was three thousand dollars that she got. And that's, I think Weaver State has about um, eight hundred and fifty to a million dollars a year that they get, it's called the Wildcat Fund. It's a, it's a micro grant, so help people with that as well. And so, but, you know, you, you'd be surprised, I've had people come in with a thirty-eight page business plan. Or a forty-two page business plan. And, um, unless you're buying a twenty million dollar company. You don't need a twenty, thirty-eight page business plan, you need about a ten to twelve page business plan with financials. So we really help them rewrite them, modify them, and show them what they need to put in their business plan. And so, that's, you know, that's what we're doing with, um, with, at, at the SBDC, so, thanks, Todd. Um, you, but, you know, we do, I mean, there's, I, I see, I see a lot of people, like, I, you know, I saw two people yesterday, I saw a person today. But I'm in my office, trying to get people, um, to, to at least have an advantage or an opportunity to. To open up a business or.
Yeah.
Um, put, kind of like the people that are gonna present today, do, doing something, adding to their business. Cause they already have two businesses here in Moab, they're adding one more.
So are you busy enough to be just reactive versus getting, trying to like, do we need to go help with finding more people? Or you're golden and everything's fine?
Well, no, I mean, if, I, I, I would, um, I, I would invite you to tell everybody about our services. Um, you know, even about, one of the things, like I said, outside of trying to help people create businesses. Or scale their business, but even help them with employees, management, leadership, we do all those things too. So, you know, I gave, like I said, I gave, and I don't mind saying, Moonflowers, you know, I went there and I gave them a two and a half, two, two and a half hour. Um, management training session, um, to try to help them with leadership and, and those kind of things. So, there's other things that we do outside of businesses, try to help in any way we can. Um, I also meet with, like I met with Doug Key from the Utah Micro Loan Fund, because he also has funding too. Um, and so we, through Utah, so we try to help them get funding in any way we can that way as well, so.
Before we, Aaron, did you have a question for, or a comment you wanna jump in with?
Yeah, just had one question, I mean, as we're thinking about, you know, uh. Writing like a, a procedure book and, and strategic plans. Um, and I think you told me this before, like, if we were to be like, any applicant has to be like. Kinda like signed off by the small business thing, that would be almost kinda doable, right, by you? Like.
I'm, I'm, are you talking to me? Are you talking about, but you're talking about the grants, like the RCGs?
Right, because one of the things I was concerned about was when we were going through this process, it was like. You know, hey, here's my business idea, give me money, and it was like, oh, well, I mean. I don't know if our subcommittee looked at like, you know, having a business plan, like, I just, I just kinda wanna address the board and kinda ask you if this would. Would be feasible to be like, hey, here's a, a checklist, you have to go into, see Todd. He, he says, oh, these guys have, you know, like, it looks good from your end, you know, that's what I'm wondering.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I mean, like, I think in the first meeting. Um, I said, yeah, I think that would be a good idea if you want to, to send, um. People that are, are wanting RCOG money, RCG money, have them come in and I can meet with them prior to them submitting their applications to you. For, for funding, so.
Yeah, I just think we should kinda booknote that as our board members to think about that as like a procedure, so.
Thanks, Aaron. Yeah, I mean, I think what, this actual next conversation is to begin sort of diving back into our conversations about. Planning for the future funding cycle for RCG, RCOG. Um, and I definitely think one of the things we had talked about doing was having a workshop ahead of the. Like, before we have people send in applications to us. Um, where we can kinda tell them more about the grants, what the county's looking for and prioritizing. But it would be great, I think, potentially, to also have somebody like Todd be available at like a booth there that people can stop by and learn about additional resources. And perhaps we can find a way also to, to plug it all together and make it a, a good process.
And we also, just to let you know, in town, we also have the women, the women's, the Women's Business Center as well. So I think that not just myself, we could also have, um, her involved. Um, in that, like you said, if you have something like that, in my opinion, I can tell you all what to do. I just think that, you know, she's wonderful and, and, you know, um, she would, she does a great job too.
Yeah, that's a good point, Todd, thanks for that. Right, thank you all. Okay, yeah, thanks so much, really appreciate it. Um, okay, so next up on the agenda is a conversation about the RCG and RCOG. As we begin looking towards next year, and I think the focus that for, we'll have a, this is, this is gonna be like a mini version of the conversation right now. Setting us up for a bigger conversation next month. Um, this is, you know, all this idea of us, we did a bunch of things different this year, looking back and what we did well. What we wanna do a little bit different going forward, and maybe also looking at what some of the other counties in Utah, how they manage their process also. So we wanna do that for next month. Um, for this month though, I mean, Melissa and I started talking about, like, what does our calendar look like and when do we need to start moving? And so I just wanted to sort of start having a little conversation about that right now. Um, so that we can kind of like, set our dates as to when we wanna get this process rolling, so that we can then work back from there and make sure we have like. A plan for that process all set and ready to go before it needs to start happening. Um, and I think this is, I mean, this is something I wanna put out to you guys, but like. So this past year, I think we started having conversations about it in January, started the process around February. Felt kind of scrunched and squished and, 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 you know, we, we made it happen, but it wasn't easy to make everything happen to get to the. Place where we had a recommendation in front of the commission by June, right? That, to me, seemed like getting it in front of the commission in June, set us up so that Melissa was then able to help. Get the money into Grand County as soon as possible. So I think that, that portion of it, to me, felt pretty good about like when we hit the finish line. Um, seems to me that maybe we could stretch out the process a little bit, so start it earlier. Uh, in order to have, you know, more time to do the due diligence we need to, to do the outreach that we want to. And especially if we want to host a workshop, um, ahead of receiving applications, we would wanna probably start earlier. So, my thought on that is, you know, something like, we start advertising like in December. December to the very beginning of January maybe, so that we could then have a workshop sometime in like late January. And then receive applications and be on, you know, still it would be not, I mean, that's not a super extensive timeline, but. A slightly more pushy, just slightly than last year, but I don't know, I wanted to put that out to you guys, thinking, you know, we're all involved in the processes past year. And Melissa, we've talked about this a little bit, but if you have any other feedback, but I think it would be great if we could sort of like, set the target date as to when we wanna get this process kicked off. This winter, um, so that, yeah, I guess that we can work back from there.
Um, so, it was a lot of work, right? It was like a lot of reading, a lot of work on our part, and a lot of work on the people who applied. And I wonder, um, if we, um. Narrowed it down a little bit, I mean, I think it's great that a lot of people apply, but I also think it's, um. It's not great to turn a lot of people down, and especially if there is a way to, um, better express. The thresholds slash amounts slash, um, criteria that we're using. So that people could, I mean, so, so that people could self-select a little better. And do a little better job realizing we're not the right source for them, or. And so that can save some time and make it more focused, and I feel like, and what I mean by that is, um. I, I, I feel like one of the pieces that, um, the program is really looking at. And in my mind, is, is, does it have a multiplier? Does it have an effect on the bigger community? Because it's great to help this little business here and that little business there, and that's important, obviously. But, I mean, if we're trying to actually affect our economy as a whole in any way. Um, the, the businesses that are gonna help other businesses or have that multiplier effect, and we can maybe spend a little time thinking about what that means. And then we could put that, so if, if your business is straight up not gonna affect anyone, you're just gonna make widgets and sell them here in Moab. And you're gonna, you're gonna hire some people or whatever, maybe that doesn't grow the economy. Or, or, you know, support other businesses, but, so I don't know, it's just an idea. And, and if we could come up with something and we felt comfortable with it and it matches the Granite Program and it matches the commission's intent. Then we could just save, um, a, a few people from really working hard on their applications when you read it right away and kinda go, oh, that's not really gonna. Qualify.
I totally agree with that, if the multiplier being, I mean, we, we did end up using it as a criteria, we just didn't tell people ahead of time that you're going to use it as a criteria. So doing that, both through our written communications and at the workshop, makes a ton of sense to me.
I have a couple of thoughts, based on this past year and then some experiences from earlier.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, the, the process we did use this year, thanks to those of you who drove that. Um, did accomplish one of the goals, which was to develop a pipeline. And to start using that pipeline and the people who were involved in that to be more aware of the grants. And the process was straightforward. Um, to Aaron's point, I think the idea of having a workshop is brilliant. And the fact that we have, uh, time to get that done. In the third, in the, excuse me, in the fourth quarter of this year, when businesses are already looking at their next year. Um, and then, not that we would be, not that we would hold against people who didn't take that. Or attend the workshop, but it would certainly, I think. Shift some of the kinds of applications that we saw this first time, where people were just looking at, let's hire one person. Um, and then achieve that goal of the multiplier effect that, that, uh, Ashley has pointed out. So I think, and I think it's also around the holidays and early in that first month of the new year, a lot of people are resetting mentally. And business-wise, and so getting an earlier start, um, giving people some time to work on. Ideas for the RCG. As you're also looking, working on their own business plan, their financial plan for the coming year. Um, might help people decide that this is not the time for them. You know, and, and, and self-restraint. Um, and it also might give them more focus on the role that the RCG could play. And be a little bit more, um, of an incentive.
Yeah, that makes sense. So you're suggesting we might even consider, yeah, starting a little bit earlier, even to.
Yeah.
Maybe a workshop in December would be the best timing for it potentially. It's reasonable, if we can do it.
Um, I have some thoughts on that, because I would like to know what the commission's, um, goals are. Because that needs to be probably written in a little bit to what we're looking for. Um, because we need to understand what the county's wanting specifically. Not to say that we don't need to have our own thoughts and, and our board here, but we also need to understand what's gonna happen at, at the end. A little bit, so it'd be nice to involve the commissioners as far as like, maybe a workshop with them or, or hearing them out. Or maybe they have a strategic plan that we need to hear, so we have kind of an understanding how to move. In a direction that they're wanting, not just our own direction, I think that's important. And then, um, I like the idea of, I really felt like, I get it was a lot of work and that's part of it. But it was five million times better than it has been in the past, in my, in my own personal opinion. Um, it was very exclusive and it wasn't very open, and so I felt like it was really good as far as that stuff goes. But I agree, we could tighten up some of the stuff that says, you have to have these basic, specific multiplier, whatever. It has to be there, and then it does weed some people out, but I definitely would like to hear from the commission a little more too. So workshops would be nice to hear both sides of that, um, from, from people that want to apply and the people that are gonna be approving. Um, in, in the ultimate factor.
Yeah, I don't know, what do you think, Melody? I mean, I, I feel like what I've heard from you and sort of commission in the past is. It's kind of like our job to think about strategy and then. Send, like, like, kind of like, come up with the format to get approval or ask the commission, rather than sort of asking for an open engagement with the commission. But I'm, I mean, if there's, if there's appetite for like a co-board workshop with the commissioners, I mean, that's great too, like. But yeah, what, what is there appetite for? And what, what's the most useful way for us to engage the commission?
At this point in time, especially with you guys thinking about, um, you know, doing a workshop in, in December, I mean, it's the end of.
I mean, it's the end of August or now, so you have September, October, November. But three months and I don't even think that we really, I mean, yet we had a process that existed last year, but did we really have a strategy behind that process? You know, and that's why I think we need to finish designing the process and creating that strategy. That of how, what is it? Are we going to allow nonprofits or not allow nonprofits? Are we going to? Is what, what's our drive? Are we, are we looking for sales tax dollars? Are we looking for? Are we looking to, I mean, Aaron's, we've sent that information. Are we looking to strengthen local businesses? And they have to be locally owned. Are we, you know, so I think that's what, that this board. I think that the commission is going to support really any of those ideas. But I really do think that, that this, this board could nail that down. And that's what needs to happen in the next two months. Because if we're going to dial down that process, really figure out what it is that we're looking for and share that with businesses. So that we don't have thirty people applying that really aren't going to get in there and going on this work. And we want to have them maybe get with Todd before they come to see if they're really a viable business. You know, all of those things are going to have to happen. And I think that that's a lot of, a lot of work to do. To get next round of RCG grants. And that's what this, you know, I think this board's position is to take care of that. Now we have Melissa now that is an economic development staff for Grand County, but she's busy doing a lot of other things. Her and Todd both are doing the things that we don't do. We are in charge, this board is in charge of the RCG and RCOG grants. Number one, and then to assist in, in whatever ways that we can after that. And so I don't think that we want Melissa to be riding this process and strategy. I think this is that's where the board is going to do that. And if we want to take that strategy to the commission when we finish it. I don't see that as an issue, you know, to either, either have Melissa present it or you just come and present for five minutes. I mean, we take presentations all the time and say, you know, this is, this is the direction that they're go, that we're going. I mean, it would never hurt. I don't think that any of those things are going to be bad. All of that is economic drivers and development. It's just what are we wanting out of these grants? And then I think with having economic development, I know last year I was, wanted to take a piece of that and, and use it for economic development. But we didn't, we were so unclear. I think at this point, Melissa is going to come to us and say, I think that a piece of it needs to go for the department. And I think that needs to be a piece of it as well. Those are all, those are all the thoughts I have. I have, I have spoke to commissioners. And I think that they all feel somewhat like to that.
Melody, you were great during this process from the spring. Sharing with us your perception of what the commission was looking for, what the concerns were. And it was really helpful to us. And I don't think any commissioner. Needs another meeting, especially as we approach the end of the fiscal year, however much you may want one. So we can rely on you to give us feedback as we go through this process.
The other thing too, that I would like some feedback on is if the, if we are not going to have, let's say they're $200,000. We need to know that. So then it even limits, limits even more to, you know what I mean? As far as that goes, or maybe like the county has their own, not necessarily revolving fund blow or whatever they decide. That maybe Melissa's department does. I'm just trying to make sure that we're kind of not just. Assuming we have $200,000. Because the county decided they wanted to do something different. Do you see what I mean? And I guess that's where I'm saying we need to know what we're, what they're looking for from us.
Certainly that's outside part of the parameters, like if just an amount basically would be really useful to have. I mean, even if it's not voted on by the commission, but just that we have a sense of what we're, yeah, I would hate to go out and advertise. You know, X number of dollars available, which is kind of why we ended up making sure it was all available this year. Because that's where we, we did advertise it.
We maybe don't need it for, for Melissa's salary. We'll leave that salary alone, but what about travel expenses? If for her to go to some events or, you know, things like that. What about a website? What, you know, there's some other key things that we could use in that department that aren't funded, not necessarily maybe her position. Which is kind of what my thoughts were last year, you know, like you can put this as a position, piece of her position. But I think that maybe as the months go longer and she's learning that she could come back with some feedback for that too. And then that would be something that.
Yeah, yeah, we have a few months before we need to.
You know, it is something that's my party was, it was on my list here to talk about as far as, you know. Getting that, that going. And moving along with the design process, strategy of the grants. Because even though we had it last year, it was, it's, it's not exactly, it was, it was fantastic and wonderful, but it needs to be refined.
Jasmine and Aaron both have their hands up and then Ashley also.
All right, Cory just texted me. Could you let him back in? That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
You know, I was really, when Forrest was saying like commissioners tend to attend another meeting. I wonder if we do something like, here's twenty things we came up with. Commissioners fill out this poll and then we can like wait our decisions based on that. I don't, I don't know if that would be like an easy way to like, yeah. Figure, figure these kind of things out, but that was just kind of my comment.
Thank you. Ashley.
When I first got asked to serve on this committee, I thought we were working on general economic development a lot more. And then I was quickly informed that no, you're, ninety percent of your job is given away this money. And I get it that the county has the choice of how to use this money. And I wonder if, I mean. I definitely think we want to stop, wait, sorry, we want to help small businesses. And we want to grow. I think there are a lot of people that have good business ideas that don't have business training and need some kind of on-ramp. To getting from where they are to running a successful business. But I also kind of wonder like, all the energy that we put in to helping just a few small businesses. Like wow, you know, and, and the other thing that worries me a little bit about it is. There is this picking winners and losers part of this job that concerns me a little bit. Like kind of a free market capitalist, actually. And, and so I, I believe in all the programs and, and things that help people. But like giving someone money is, I've been involved in starting and selling businesses. And, you know, the money is the only one problem, you know? You have these other problems, like is there a market and can you address it and all those issues? And so I just wonder, I think along what Mel was saying, like if we, and what you're kind of pointing out, Brittany, that if we. If the amount of money we're giving away is, gets too much smaller, it starts to be like, great, we gave ten businesses $10,000. Is that really moving the needle to help the economy for the county? And, and so, and, and it's just, so I don't know, I, I think there could, there could be. Uh, other ways that this committee could be helping support economic growth in the county. Beyond spending all of our management time on these grants. And I don't know exactly what that looks like or what the commission wants us to do, but it's just interesting supporting. Like if you look at the way the travel council works, they're not giving away any money. They are executing the marketing plan. I mean, that's really what they're doing. And so could we be a little, I mean, I, I, I'm not getting. I'm just making that kind of argument on the other side here, that, that it's a lot of work to give businesses pretty small grants. That I think, you know, if we look at what we did in childcare and what we've done in these different things, they definitely move the needle and help to make the difference. But I don't like picking winners or losers. That, that makes me feel like if there, especially if there's already an existing business, a restaurant. Or somebody like to create more competition for somebody that's here by giving them this leg up feels funny to me.
I think a really great way to make this money go somewhere different. I mean, what about if we bought lands with that money to sit there? I mean, I don't know if that would fall in there, but you know, bought land, it was so that we could have a manufacturing company come in there. You know, I mean, maybe this.
To me, my name would help them a lot.
Well, the thing is we have done that where we're crossing infrastructure, infrastructure stuff. So, you know, we, the economic board, the RCG grants have gone to helping with the housing crisis.
Actually, to me, what's really important is that we're pushing in a direction. One, that there is a direction, that it's not just if we just throw this out there as like a call for applicants. That has no strategy behind it, that's problematic, right? Because then we do just have to pick winners and losers rather than executing a strategy, right? So I think that's really important one is that we have a coherent strategy for the grant cycle, which also is about a coherent strategy for economic development in the county. That need to be tied into each other very closely. So I think that's the, the biggest thing. But I think also having, and this is actually just, I mean, it's sort of worked out fortuitously in the past. I think in some ways, at least on the housing part of it. But having something that we're not the only actors in the community pushing in that same direction. Is also really useful, right? Like something, when something, I mean, we've all, we all saw it, right? Housing availability, housing affordability had become, probably still is. Like the number one bottleneck for economic development in the county, right? And so we saw, we all saw that, not just those sitting around the table in this room, but in other rooms around the county too. And all decided we need to do something about that. So we started a housing task force, there's a housing affordability plan. There's stuff happening at the city, there's stuff happening at county level, and we were just one actor among many that pumped, you know, $500,000 or so. Over a period of about three years into affordable housing. And did we make all the difference? No, but that's how you get things done when you work in the same direction as a larger group of people. We were one group that was helping direct funds alongside other groups that were helping direct funds and energy and strategy. And that to me is like a recipe for success, right? When we were, it was really just us, I would say more so, pushing with mobile community childcare on childcare. I think we moved the needle. It was a smaller issue in terms of sort of the amount of money needed to move the needle. But I don't think we have sort of all those drivers in place pushing in the same way there. So I think that's, to me, that's part of the question here is like, how do we make sure that this going forward kind of does it all? Which is not simple because I think we've been asked to keep it like really open. Meaning we like, we want to invite lots of people in. We don't want it to just be like two or three groups invited to apply, right? Which would be happen if we narrow it down too, too much. But we also don't want it to just be, so we don't want it to be too, too wide open. We don't want to be too narrow either, right?
But you could do that with the qualifications that we talked about, like you were saying, like if they pass a certain test with Todd, then, then we know. But I just thought of a way better way to say what I was trying to say. And that is, what are we doing to help the existing businesses in Grand County? What are we doing to make our economy better, stronger, faster for all the businesses? Cause I feel like trying to, spending a bunch of money on a manufacturing plant that's going to compete for employees with people who are already competing for employees. Or that isn't like, how is that helping the overall economy? I mean, our economy.
One answer to that is that we've all identified a need to support entrepreneurs.
That's not helping my business.
To have a healthy economy? You need to have a strong environment to support entrepreneurs, an ecosystem to support entrepreneurs. And I think we've all identified that as a problem.
Okay, fine. We should support.
I mean, I don't think that's the only thing we should be working on. I totally, I agree with you. But I don't think that supporting people that's doing startups is just producing competition that's taking away from other businesses. I think there is a multiplier there.
Agreed. There, there can be, especially if it's the kind of business that's providing some service that everyone in town needs or whatever. But I just, I just think that we have a lot of businesses in town and right now it's rough out there. And so, so I keep thinking about, is there something we can do? Are, are we doing enough to support the general economy? How are we getting, what we need in this town is more customers for our existing businesses. And what are we doing to help that? Because a lot of these businesses have had a hard time getting enough customers lately. And I get it that, I'm not talking about just marketing, I'm talking about, because turning on the marketing faucet doesn't always do the job. And that's when you start really looking at our economy and figuring out what drives it, which kind of gets me to my point about offering. The more we have on the public lands that we're offering as recreation that appeals to a broader range of people, that's how we get more customers. Or at least doing the deep dive and understanding how do we get more customers and who are existing businesses? And how do we make sure they're healthy before we start diversifying into manufacturing or doing all this work on entrepreneurship? All of which is valuable. I'm just saying, we haven't really asked that question. Are we helping our existing businesses?
And in fairness, I would say that's my job. So I've spent the last four weeks, I guess, taking a lot of Deborah's time. We've consumed a lot of hours, it's spent, we've been on with state and federal agencies and. You know, different funding agencies. I can't even tell you how many people that Deborah has introduced me to or that GoYo has opened up. Or, you know, once you start getting with these organizations, then all of a sudden it's science, public finance and here's. That is the goal, is I, I believe that at a macro level and a micro level. Micro level is great in helping entrepreneurs and growing those businesses. That's what I'm focused on every day is that macro level. And we've got, you know, strategic plans and goals and tasks. And I'm hoping to get those, you know, with Mark and get those approved. But looking at the overall economy and the economic health of the region, I am doing it many, many hours a day, every day. Because I agree, it's, for me, that's the number one focus is.
How to help the overall economy that raises all the businesses.
I have an idea around that.
I know we've got Cory waiting.
Oh, sorry. Well, no, go ahead.
Cory, go ahead and then we'll go to Cory.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And apologize for that gap in my attendance. I, I think I'm queued up nicely with this discussion where I'm not missing too much. But what I'm, what I'm hearing a little bit with this conversation, and you'll have to forgive me from my background in this. Is that your power and capacities as an advisory board becomes your greatest strength. I think to, to Ashley's point, at a certain point, depending on funding, federal funding, all those elements, you, you're beginning to. Be an opera, an operations perspective, you, you are aligning funds to, to pump. Economic vitality into the community, but more beyond that, you can't lift this all by yourself as this body. It just can't be done. And so I think you're all circling around the same point is as the advisory body speaks, speaking to the plan sets that you have. Is advancing a confirmed, studied and professional plan to the bodies in, in inter-local agreement. City and county to align their legislative policies to take action towards that. And that's, I think it's exactly what Chris said. That is how the housing momentum was initiated, the housing task force. And you guys are that, but then this affordable housing plan, it needs to be unified in that way that it's not just about the funding. And I think that's what you're all circling around to is the, the economics are going to be supported through those policies. So I think Aaron's materials and I, I know, maybe we haven't quite gotten to that. Aaron's materials that you sent, Aaron, uh, prior to this meeting, I concur with every single aspect in there. These, it speaks to that as well as Ashley's. But pumping, pumping money into the public lands, that's, I don't, I don't see that as your greatest goal. It is you acting as a professional advisory body on how to shape policies that would align. What is basically the, the land use to allow for all these businesses to thrive, remove the, the shackles. I'll, I'll kind of leave it at that.
Or, or take advantage of, I mean, Moab has the opportunity to be the best gateway community on the planet. We have more raw materials to work with. And I wasn't advocating for take, spending this money on the public lands. I was talking about really doing the work to understand what drives our economy and what are the limits to that? And where, where can we, uh, you know. Saw challenges, SWAT analysis, you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats that are to our bigger economy. How can we identify them? I mean, this is what we've tried to do with the chamber, looking at pain points in the economy, limits to growth. What is that limit goal that was causing it? And so just thinking about the bigger economy as opposed to just trying to help every, I mean, it seems like we need to do both, help some entrepreneurs.
I want to share something with you guys. I'll, I'll email it afterwards, but when I was going through all the CERTA plans and the, the way that we became that. So each of the counties in the district has a SWOT analysis that they, I don't know where it came from, to be honest with you. But it lines up, like obviously people from Grand County were the ones that gave the input to create it. So anyway, I just want to share that with you guys. See, because that's another thing we can use as we like refine it and sort of how we operationalize that kind of stuff. But yeah, it's sometimes amazing how much has already been done that we're not necessarily aware of.
So to answer some of Ashley and then also like getting ideas in a room. So one of the things that I've, I mean, my company will send me to different stuff based on like my performances and different stuff. So we, I just got back from London and Amsterdam and different places. But I always find that interesting to see how much money one company can send a place. So they have, I mean, I was thinking of all the logistics and the buses and the hotel rooms and all of the tours and all of the things that, that they do.
So they have, I mean, I was thinking of all the logistics and the buses and the hotel rooms and all of the tours and all of the things that, that they do. I don't understand why we as Moab in general, whether it's through the city and the county, go at, why don't we go after companies to say, hey, instead of going to these different places, why aren't we bringing them to Moab, Utah? And so then it's, it's more of a, um, not international travel, but it's those com, those big companies that have those giant events. Now granted, I get that maybe we don't have a, a perfect event center or a perfect whatever, but we do have OSTA and we do have all these resources. So I, I know that public lands, public lands, I mean, that's all I hear. But my point to that is if we're really trying to say, we want heads and beds and we want, um, the, um, the restaurants to be thriving and these tour companies to be, we can go after different segments of a market versus just, I agree, just turning on an advertising button somewhere. I think it's maybe be more direct and strategic on how to bring those. And then also events are my favorite thing, cause we have a plan, um, on deciding on like, where's the, uh, you know, the safety and the policing and all the different stuff that comes with those. So I, I think if we could get, and maybe that's part of your job, and I'm stepping in here in the wrong way. But I just think that that part, um, hasn't been talked about a lot. Um, and it's just kind of my own personal opinion, or I go to like these giant tournaments, um, for volleyball indifference. I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen here in a winter market and we don't even allow for that. Because one, we're limited on some spaces, but, um, you know, I think of even the footsall thing. What if there was a giant footsall, um, tournament right at the OSTA place in the middle of winter, when we need people here? Uh, and it's more affordable for something like that.
You're on, you're on the right track in that you have to look at, if you're going to compete for events, you have to look at what is each event looking for, right? What are, what did they, what do they need? If we're, if, if you have a business event that needs to go to someplace where there's lots of breakout rooms and a giant auditorium or whatever they need, we don't have that yet, okay? But what do we have, right? We have these incredible outdoor experiences that will make any businesses trip to you. Like I've done a lot of corporate stuff, not for hundreds, but for like fifty or twenty or whatever. And why did they pick this instead of Vegas? Because we can take them out to these beautiful places and do these beautiful things. So like do unique things that they can't get in Vegas, or they can't get in a, in a big city with a, with a fabulous conference center. So it's really about doing, like if you want to attract these different groups, we got to think about what do they need? And how can we compete against the other places they're looking at? And to, to compete and, and what, how can we lean into our natural assets to outcompete them? And that, that's happening. It's, it's happening in some categories.
Your question though, your question was to get people here.
Yeah, but they aren't all already there. That's, that, that is a little, that's one of the problems.
So you do think that we're using up to our capacity right now on everything?
No, I'm saying we have the opportunity to like, if you said, okay, um, we're going to entice, uh, all state, right?
Safe on.
Safe on, I'm just, sorry. It's a new state, isn't it? But your company or any company to come here and have an event here, what do they want? They need the meeting rooms, but let's assume we figure that out. We've got meeting rooms somehow. They're in different hotels or, I don't know, we get them little bikes to ride around. Hey, whatever. Okay, so they have a place to meet. And then it's like, what else do they want? They want, they need places to eat and they want special activities that are unique, right? And right now, a lot of people think the only, they would say, well, there's only Arches. We would just go to Arches and we wouldn't, what would we do for the other three days? Well, actually, we have incredible places for them to go and to climb overlook. You know, there, there, we could easily come up with an itinerary for them, but those dots are really connected right now. They might look at us and go, oh, they have Arches, that's it, we're out. So there, there's just, it's just, we can compete for some of these things. We just need to keep doing the work to figure out what they want and how we can meet their needs.
So we've got Cory with his hand up and then Melody also with her hand up. And then I want to try to kind of wrap this part of the conversation, which is really just trying to get us on track for, set up for our C O G, R C G trial this next year. Um, but let's hear from both of these two, Cory and then Melody.
Thank you again. Um, I, I'm sorry to pick on you, Erin. I just, Erin's contributions, I, I really think they nailed it for me. Because again, I think I, what Brittany is saying, what Ashley's saying, I couldn't agree more. But when they're here, the, the resiliency, the sustainability of the community is not there. So our levels of service, the level of product to the world we're, we're providing is degrading. We are, we're having service weights, longer staff members to serve these communities coming in, fewer and fewer. Uh, we need to build that, I think it needs to be a grassroots up resiliency approach to platform what could then be a very successful and more outward looking. But if we, we can bring all the people in and all the world, but then they're waiting three hours for a table to eat. Uh, we're waiting for all these, uh, abilities to have these experiences. And while in the public lands, you know, we have the fortunate that it's not a lot of maintenance per se, that would go into that as far as staffing in Moab. But, uh, the, the buses, the, everything that it would take, we don't have the workforce to support the robust economy that we could get. So it's the chicken or the egg. Do we bring them first and then assume the housing will come and assume the workforce will come? Or do we build a resilient community where these families are staying here, building here, educating here? So I, Erin, I just, I can't compliment yours enough, as well as yours, Ashley. I, I don't think they disagreed with each other. I just, I think the focus can't get too far ahead of us of bringing folks in or even diversification or what we're calling broader diversification. I think we're all starting to circle into, well, we have a backbone and let the diversification be within that backbone. But I, with, without the, the base, it's just not, I don't see it lasting. And I think that's been what the longest struggle for at least the last five years that I can see is, when we're trying to get this ball rolling.
Thanks Cory.
Absolutely. I think the very first meeting that I came to was in this room and it was your guys workshop. That was kind of talking about the general plan or, or the strategic plan, you know, moving into that. And I, and all this discussion is not only for the R C G and R C O G moving forward strategy, but the strategy of this board. And so it's still, there's, there's just so much, like I sat there in that meeting going, we can all sit and talk about all of these things as much as we want to talk about them all. But what's the plan to make them happen? You know, what's the plan to make it happen? And not to sit here and just be like, oh, it'd be great if we have housing. And I mean, auto, automatically at that meeting, I was like, well, we can't do anything unless we have housing. And we do have housing coming along, it's moving along. We have, there's going to be apartments, you know, there's stuff being built that wasn't being built eight months ago. And it's really great. And so we are going to get employees and in the meantime, we can't just sit around and say, nothing's happening. But I mean, Melissa already has this whole idea behind, um, events coming into OSTA and them having a co-coordinator. For example, I was thinking that maybe our TRT funds could, um, could fund a special events coordinator that basically is a travel agent for those groups. So we have groups coming in. And then, you know, and so with this one, have anything to do with this board, really? I mean, it has to do with, that has to do with Moab Office Tourism, seeing if they fund that, getting a position that is like the liaison between a, a special event. And so basically the special events coming in, well, what are you going to do outside of your time? Are you going to go on a river company? Are you going to go do this like a travel agent does? I mean, when you go on one of those trips, that's what you get is like, what are the opportunities we'd like to do for the day? I mean, Melissa can't do all of this work, even though she's, she's bound and determined to get a lot of it done. So I don't necessarily, I still wonder how this board actually is going to make things happen. And maybe it is by creating legislation and that might be the action, you know, coming to the commission and saying, you know, we need to create a new position or, or, you know, or regoing, you know, taking these ideas. And that's where, where it goes back to, was taking that information back to the commission and saying, so I think that those things are happening. I just still sit here and wonder in my like, reading the bylaws and looking at the state statute and sitting in these meetings be like, other than the R C G and R C O G grants, those are things we actually can make happen and go somewhere. But we need a strategy for what we want to do with that money. Do we want to maybe them to have camp fund the travel agent, well, I'm going to call it travel agent position because it just makes sense to me. But, um, you know, for those events coming in, you know, getting with that special event coordinator and saying, hey, can we send out information to all your participants about the other things that happened in Moab, you know? And, and if that can be funded from the R C G, maybe that's a different piece that we're supporting our current businesses that are already here. And the very first meeting that we moved over into the other room, Melissa talked about using, you know, maybe some of this grant money to get insurance for all of our small businesses that we have here. Um, and I don't know where she's gone with that now, but that's something that helps all of our economy now, the current ones that already exist. You know, by giving them, you know, insurance or whatever. So those are just ideas that are around your guys' bigger picture of how do we help our current economy without, you know, the issues that we have of not enough housing, not enough employees, you know, not well-informed trained employees. And I know everybody's working on, I mean, that's, Chamber works on those things as far as teaching hospitality. So I mean, everybody is working to that huge common goal. But I think being more, I, I, you know, eight months now being like, you know, on this board is like, it's really hard to figure out where we're all going. Other than, I mean, where we have a specific goals, R C G and R C O G grants. And I think that we did a really good job and continue to. I think some of these other bigger things are just going to be either just conversation that take up our time or conversation that we really have to dial it down and figure out what it is we want to do.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if we, if we can have some clarity on, to me, the question there would be like, we only have so many dollars in this county that can be used flexibly for economic development, right? So it's like, if it can be funded by TRT, then we shouldn't be trying to do it, right? I mean, that's not, that would not be a good use of a very limited set of dollars. And so we have to figure out how can we get the most bang for our buck? I mean, we have a small amount that we can actually mobilize and we have to have some clarity on what it is, where we can get that multiplier, where we can get something really big worthwhile out of it.
I have a question on that. So is there a way to hire, hire, um, with that money, a grant writer to find more money? Is that not a, I mean, okay, so, so, and then do you get paid like a commission that however much you get for our county? Cause that would be, makes sense to me.
So I would flip that, cause I love where you're going. And the way that I would flip it is that money is not our problem, a plan is our problem. And what I do every day is I am working really closely with Angie. I've had tons of departmental meetings with G Cap around new trail openings. And what do we do to get our branding back around some of that outdoor credibility that we have lost? To get events, experiences, like all of these things, we're having those conversations every day. And what I'm doing is I'm taking a strategy and boiling that down to areas of focus. And then that's being translated into tasks. And as soon as we have those tasks, we will give that plan back as a county. And funding is not going to be an issue. So, but as far as like individual businesses, and that's something that this board may want to look at. Like what is the strategy of the board? What are you looking to fund through R C G, through R C O G? Maybe there are additional things available, but as a community, as our overall overarching economy, that's what we're working on as a county every day. Like I've worked with, you know, just over the last week and a half alone, state, federal, inter-departmental, county resources, like we're doubling down on a plan and we will get it funded, but it's a matter of getting the plan. So.
Wait, so do we write this plan or is the plan already written?
I'm writing the plan.
Oh, you're writing the plan. Okay.
I know. No, I'm writing the plan. I've been hired to write the plan. I am in process of writing the plan. Yes.
Okay. And so really our goal is to figure out what we're doing with our.
Say that again.
What's the name of the plan? Do you have a name for it?
It, it, it's called, we need to get our stuff together. So the county, okay, so I'll say a few things.
Yeah.
If being down four percent year over year in tourism is enough to make this town get weepy and scared, we need to place some focus in some areas. We need to double down on tourism. Because if as other communities are seeing that this, uh, these are external market forces that are at play, what happens when it goes down to fifteen percent? What happens if it goes down twelve percent year over year? That's going to be a problem. So for the county, what the plan is called is how do we make sure that we close the gap on that four percent? And push on getting that higher? And then how do we also make sure that this is difficult and it requires some attention if it's down four percent? But thank goodness, we have all of this over here to balance that out. And that to me is kind of, you know, what we're talking about is what makes a prosperous, healthy, balanced, resilient economy? And that's what I'm doing every day, working with the state partners, working with financial partners, finding out what is our sales tax, tax leakage? Who are we losing it to? Is that a category that we even care about? Because we don't feel like we can be competitive? Or is it a category that, yeah, absolutely, we care that we're losing twenty million dollars in this one category, when we could be outperforming really, really well? And that's not like a one Z, two Z business approach. That is literally, we are leaking twenty million dollars a year in this area, thirty million dollars a year in this area. And does it make my feelings hurt and make me cry that we're losing out on auto sales? No, it's not going to hurt my feelings at all. But when we have addressable markets that we can absolutely do something about and there's funding behind a plan, that's the plan.
Okay.
And what it's called is, I can't be losing my business and going sideways over a four percent, what I believe to be external market force. That makes me really uncomfortable. So I feel like my, my job is, is how do we go about getting this up so that I can reduce that discomfort?
So Melissa.
Yeah.
How do we make sure that your plan and the strategy for these grants and the strategy of the Moab Office of Tourism, and ideally even beyond that, are all in line with one another?
Yeah.
I'm working with them.
Are you?
So I have plans. I am absolutely going back to them and I'll be asking them for funding on specific initiatives. And I'll tell you why, is because there's tourism and for sure tourism is our big thing and that's traditional tourism. There are also, and we had a meeting about this today at the state level to get feedback as well. There's traditional tourism where I have a sales funnel and I kind of hope and pray that we can get a piece of your budget and that we're a part of your planning for, you know, your next two years, three years. And then also, what are the tools in the toolbox that we have control over tomorrow? Like I can get a Nike race. I can go out and get these mountain bike and intra-scholastic races. So to me, if, if I can get a Nike race, for example, that brings in heads and beds and they buy breakfast burritos and while they're here, they spend and they're increasing sales tax, you better bet that's on my radar and that's probably one of the better uses. And I will go to them and they can tell me no, and that's totally fine, but I'm still going to ask them for TRT dollars. Because there's more than one way beyond just having an advertising and a sales funnel that we can impact that. So that's my, I mean, I work with them every day. So when you say, you know, how do we know or what do you? It's, it's departmental. I have meetings with departments every day. I'm trying to develop some things with the city. We are absolutely critically needing to partner with the city on some things. Why? Because they have all of our sales tax.
Yeah.
They're sitting on it, but we have an awful lot of money that we can bring in if we've got a really good plan. And that's what we have to offer them. So, yes.
It, it comes back to, um, what is a healthy gateway community?
Yes.
What is it? And, and who, who's doing the best job of it? And what is happening is we have more competition than ever. More communities are trying to take a piece of our market share. They're inviting O H P, they're inviting Nike races, they're inviting regular tourism. And when you treat the visitors as a monolith and you're just trying to say, come to Moab, come to Moab, come to Moab, you're not winning because these other communities are saying, we're the coolest place for climbing. We're the coolest place for whatever sightseeing, whatever the different activities are. And so we, we ha, we have to be the coolest place for every piece of the market. And we have the opportunity to do that. And it's, um, so, so it, it really does come down to thinking about, it's kind of like what Brittany said too, is that if you want to attract a certain group of people for a certain activity, you need to have everything that they need. If you want pickleball, if you want volleyball, if you want whatever, footsall, we have to have the facility for it. But we also have to have, why would they rather, there's a huge footsall facility in St. George. Why, why would they rather come here than there? Because in addition to the footsall, it's not just about food and beds. It's about like what else we can offer them that makes it, like the Nike people, they say, oh, we love coming to Moab so much. We love coming to Moab. And because we didn't have, the B A R M was not big enough for a Nike race. And you have the highway, you have people crossing the highway and cars coming out, like it was dangerous. And so we didn't have the right facility to attract them. The mud flats, mud springs, um, is, uh, is going to allow us to do that. But what do we need in other categories? Like if we want other entities, it would be amazing if we could have, attract business conferences. Maybe only one at a time, maybe we only have one facility, but, and then they get to go do these incredible things that they can't do in Vegas or whatever. The, a Moab style business conference. Like I think really thinking through what you were talking about, like what would it take to get them to come here instead of Europe? What would it take? And what would that look like? And really doing the deep dive of. And what would that look like? And really doing the deep dive of understanding, they need these kind of activities and these facilities and working on it more. But. Yeah, it's, it's, it's about doing the work at the detailed level. And that's what your plan is trying to get to. Is what are these categories and what do we have to do to win in all these different categories?
And it doesn't have a special name, I'm sorry. It's called, we need it. And so we need it to plan.
It's an economic development strategy.
So when do you think you're gonna get that done?
I'm working on it right now. There is no getting done. That's why, and it's not that I don't think that engaging in the rewriting of a strategic plan. Is interesting or fun or helpful or whatever. What I'm saying is, is it sort of for me like. Trying to change the tires on a racetrack while you're in the race. I'm working on it. I have a strategic plan. It's been approved by the commission.
You, you mean the general plan?
The general plan. I'm working on it every day because I have to. Like if I have to wait until we have a new strategic plan or a different strategic plan. How am I gonna do my job? No.
I'm just confused at this point. Like, because I just, I don't want us to be spending our time as a board. I mean, honestly, if we just should cancel the next three meetings, like that's fine. You know, if this board, if the only thing the county wants this board to do. Is administer the grants, we can do that in half the year. If they don't want any additional advice or help from us in creating a strategic plan or convening economic development actors. I mean, that's okay.
I don't think that's what she's saying, like.
I don't think Melissa's saying that specifically either, but I do think that we need some clarity. That there's receptivity to the work that we're doing or an interest in it from the level of the county. And I, I, I mean. Brittany, you just asked like, so really what we're doing is just administering the grants. I totally like, from her experience with the board, I understand.
I don't have enough minutes in a day to not have the straight shoot.
I mean, I don't, I do think that we need some clarity that there's an interest in. The, the, I mean, the bylaws state we're supposed to be an advisor to the department. An advisor to the commission on these issues. So like, we have the like legal mandate. But I don't feel like there's necessarily a clear desire to have a new plan written by folks at the.
There's not. I mean, there's not. I've, just the majority of the commission, I, I mean, from the first day I came in here, they were like. They don't need to go write the general plan, you know, and that's when I looked at the general plan that we currently had and I, I brought that up at that meeting, like we have general plan. Um, you know, and it doesn't fit all of the aspects, you guys, I mean, you guys have done a great job to pull some things out that, that are important. But I don't know that they want to deal with, I, I do know that they do not wanna deal with. Having a recommendation from you guys. I do think it's a waste of time. I mean, just to be straight one, it's, if, if you brought them a plan right now. It would.
So what the commission would like to do is continue to work off of the general plan that was written before. The trail just marrow received three hundred thousand dollars.
I made edits.
Before COVID.
Like there are.
Well, that's not been approved by anyone.
Correct. And since it hasn't been approved, so what I did was, I took the general plan and that's what I sent out. I made some edits to reflect all of the changes that have happened since then. I have zero hope. That those are going to be adopted in any meaningful way. And in the meantime, I have to keep working.
I totally understand.
I mean, the inconsistencies in that general plan as I read it, I mean, we need to redo it all, you know, because.
You need to redo it all, but you have no interest in having it done.
There's no way to get it done. There's not a time right now and at, at the commission level. I mean, where I'm in said meetings all day long and have a full-time job, it's sort of getting those other things done.
Right. And you've got a group of people that have offered to do it, but you're not interested in it.
Well, I don't think they're interested in just putting public lands in there, you know, I think.
I don't think that that's what's gonna get put before you. If you, if you do want something, it's an update to it, I think.
Read it though, when we read the general plan, I didn't think, I thought the subtle changes were fine. So like, is the commission not willing to like? Say, oh, yeah. But a full rewrite is out the question. Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, I think it needs to be updated, but it's not a full rewrite. So an update would be definitely. Palatable. I think that they, they would listen to that. A full rewrite, no. That's why I think that we would be wasting our time with the whole rewrite.
Okay.
There's pieces of, I mean, we have people working on our policies and procedures manuals that are super out of date as well. I mean, there is a lot of out of date stuff. That's going on in this, in this community. I mean, I'm shocked at the amount of government that never happened before. I became a commissioner. I mean, I honestly, like, I'm just like blown away. So. I just have, we have to look at where we are gonna make the best impact, you know, and, and getting an economic development position filled. Is super important or super amazing. And I think that anything that we can do as a board to help her. The commission is going to a hundred percent back. So when she comes and says, cause she's working directly with the administration who works. Who is, who is directly being, um, told to do by the commission.
Yeah.
You know, and so when she comes to this board or I come to this board with, you know, that's.
I'm just taking it back. I've come to this meeting and we have on the agenda work on a plan. And then what I find out is that the department is writing a plan without consulting us and not involving us.
The department is not writing a plan. Absolutely not. There is a strategic plan. And this is the misconception about a strategic plan. And here's where I would like to be really clear. Strategic plans don't get writ- rewritten very often. They get updated every three to five years. Done a tremendous amount of research. We have a strategic plan. It's not meant to cover tasks. It's not meant to cover details. It's meant to be a living, breathing, organic, here's the vision of where we're going. And what I see my job as, and I am more than happy to take direction if it's the wrong thing. But I look at that strategic plan and I say, okay, great. Since we can't boil the ocean, what are some priorities? And this board has had amazing discussions. We've gotten input and applications from businesses. We understand what our community is really good at. We understand what our assets and our resources are. And within the context of that general plan, cause that's the one that I have and I don't find it to be deficient. And that could just be me, but I, you know, the gaps that I feel like it has, it gives me what I need to say. These are my now priorities. Here are the tasks that I would do within that. Here are some of the things that I would focus on, and these are some of the metrics that I would measure. Some of those are gonna work and pan out. Some of them are not going to work and pan out at all. I'm not off in a vacuum rewriting a strategic plan, so I just wanna be really, really clear. I'm taking the strategic plan that we have. And I'm putting my own focus and priorities that I'm working with Mark to make sure, like, hey. Is this what we need to be focused on? Are these the right focuses? And if they are, what are all of the tasks? And then the resources that I've been connected to, state, federal, regional, all of those things are now. Once we have that in place for each one of these activities, how will we get some funding? Maybe some of that may be going to the M T A board and saying, I think that this is a really appropriate T R T expense. It could be going to, you know, a different department, state or federal and saying, here's what we wanna do and this is our plan. And we need resources to be able to help us do this. But I am working for the strategic plan. And then based on that, I'm just doing what everyone does. Every company does it. You've got a three, five, seven-year plan. And you say, okay, great. What do we think that we can chunk out this year? What does the budget need to look like? And then how are we gonna measure if that was successful and we ever wanna do it again? And that's my private sector. That could be totally the wrong way of approaching it. But that's my private sector background. And my private sector background says, all right, you've given this, this is our three, five, seven-year strategic plan. Based on that, here's how I'm gonna set up.
So, but I like the idea of having that, cause then we can look at the R C G and the R C O G. And say, can we match this goal with this money? Do you see what I mean? So I know it feels like we're not doing a whole lot, but I do like the idea of having that.
Well, and honestly, that's.
Chris, I'd love to make a comment too at some point.
Sure.
Sorry.
Oh, no, actually, yeah.
Well, go ahead.
No, Ashley, please go first. I was just, I really want that topic, wanna make a comment.
Um, I was just gonna say that when you guys, I wasn't really on the board when you made a lot of those childcare commitments. But at the time, it was like, that had a multiplier. It helped a lot of businesses in town. It helped provide more workforce because it freed up some parents to be workers, like. That was a strategy that helped our economy. So I, I, I think we, you're, you're. These dots are not as far off as we're, as it feels like for a moment here. Well, you know, the commission wants the economy to be healthy. We want the economy to be healthy. We've got staff now that's really great that can help us guide us a little bit more than us just wandering around. And, and we've, and the grants and this other work, I think, like. I think discussing these potential updates to the general plan is what this board is here to do. And we should be diverse enough and be able to figure out a way to say some things that will make sense and make it more up to date and face. And, and be addressing where we really are today. Like where, where are we and what do we need today? That's the real question. That's what we're trying to answer. And yes, we need other businesses and yes, we need businesses that support other businesses. And, but really understanding like, what do we do in the current economic? What is our strategy to win for our community in the current economic situation and the, you know, going forward? Are we, are we doing everything we can to win? That's sort of the question. And that plan sort of says it, but some of the things it says are a little out of date. They just don't apply right now. And that's what I think the update is what we should be working on. So if Melissa's working on taking, making her own. Uh, work plan, we'll call it, of, and figuring out what she's gonna be working on. And we can say, that sounds great, or how about a little more this or, you know, if we can, if we can support that or tweak it. Or give her good advice on how to do it, that then we're acting, we're helping our staffer get her job done. I mean, so I don't think we're as far off as it felt like there for a minute. Sorry, Cory, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and then from Melissa's perspective, I agree with what it is you're saying from a staff perspective for the, the county. I would respectfully, probably not agree with everything you've said about the public planning process and how to institute legislation. From these planning aspects. And in that, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of city administration, the mayor or the city manager. But I can certainly tell you, the city is well open to having an interlocal coordination on a task force. From an advisory capacity to from our future land use plan, land use management updates and infrastructural updates. This is a key component. So when we're talking about the county's general plan, heard, absolutely. Fifty percent, but as it was said earlier on, a lot of the activities, sales taxes within the city. So how is it that we are not coordinating on a larger advisory strategic basis? And then giving from this task force a unified strategic action plan. That then Lisa can take and go from the county perspective and then incorporate from that perspective. And then I can go back to the city. And align those, which was said at the very beginning of the meeting, we need to all be swimming, swimming and paddling in the same direction. It's clear to me that is not happening. And how we do that, i- it's, it's changed continuously over the last few years, which again. Get, gaining our bearings for us to begin paddling same direction. That's, that's step one, which I think Melissa's. In the throes of, that is what I believe I see her doing. But I, I do think. Cutting the capacity, cutting the power of this group to a simple grant allocation process. Is, yes, that is a part of what we could do. And also offering up some potential ideas of bringing in diversification, but you. Y'all have such a greater power than what is, I think, being said. And for me, again, it's, it's, it's these. Implementations of policy and legislation, th- these incremental steps of change. I think it's something that Chris has said, if. We're, we're moving that bar, but it is moving, but if it's not aligned, we're, we're, we're not doing anything. And so I, 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 I hear the frustration in everyone's voice. Um, and Erin, I kept picking on you. I wasn't sure if that was all of your commentary. I couldn't tell what it was. But both your, excuse me, yours and Ashley's comments, I think. Are hitting on the same, there, there's same sides of the same, or different sides of the same coin, but. I think from where I heard Chris's original discussion framing, that's what I think the city needs. And the fact that we're not being considered more heavily in this is a concern.
That's great. Deborah?
Well, I don't need to follow up right after that. If anybody has any responses to Cory's, Cory's comments, go for it. Um, I was just gonna say, you know, from my perspective, um. Being part of the agency that state mandates these boards and attending for all of my counties and everything like that. Um, you know, Grand County is very unique in that there are, um, other. Um, bylaws for your group that do kind of give you a little, several more duties, you know, and so. Um, that's just not the norm in other groups. Um, but I do wanna say that, you know, I think kind of what Ashley said, like. All of your brainstorming and all the conversations that's been happening about visions and plans and strategies and stuff like that. I think isn't for nothing, you know, if Melissa does have her plan that comes across the desk that. And that's kind of how it's funneled down in other counties, right, to the board, comes from, um, the county level or the staff level. That you all have discussed so many projects, like I've heard of, you know, a hundred different projects that you. Can advise spending that R C G money on, right? Like you do have that power. You do have that ability to advise. On those funds. And so if you do have a project that you guys have all agreed on, that maybe takes some of the sub-grant money. That's an option, right? So I just wanna kind of put in a plug to start thinking about from like the project aspect. What are the projects, you know, and I know you really wanna get a plan ahead of time and I get that, but, um. You've discussed so many projects and that is your, your duty to advise on projects that. Um, you could spend the R C G and R C O G money on, so. Just a little bit different of perspective, that's all. Carry on. I'm curious to have any questions.
If we carry on, do we have to keep calm?
Up to you, up to you.
You know, it seems to me that, um, we're in this, in a sense, in a transition. Because. The, the board, especially without staff support. Has done a lot of the operational or administrative work. That is a part of what we've been. Um, which is, according to the bylaws, one of our major roles and functions. And, and Melody was very clear about that, that that's, and that's a really high priority. That's a responsibility that in a sense was added. To what had been the Economic Development Advisory Committee of the county. When the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity introduced the R C G and R C O G plan. They, it required this community board. And so the county. Consult, integrated the board that was Economic Development. Um, advisory, when there was, there really wasn't an economic development staff. Elaine Gisler was sort of acting and de facto of the economic development staffer. Um, and then the R C G, R C O G, um, board merged. It was integrated. And we spent a lot of time actually trying to sort out how, how to move forward, because a lot of people on the board at that time. Came into this really thinking it was the Economic Development Board. And only from administrative staff did we understand that the R C G was the primary focus. So now we're in a position where we've spent a lot of time and energy, developed some great ideas. Thanks to everybody who's on the board, who's, and was on the board earlier, contributing to where we are now. But now we have a, 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 a staff person, a professional staff person. Um, who's. Performance planner or work plan is being driven by administration. Um, within, with, uh, um, within conversations with commission. So we as a board are going through a bit of a transition. I didn't hear Melissa's saying that she was redoing the strategic plan. I heard her saying that she was writing her job description or her performance plan. And once, and you've been in the job six weeks?
Maybe.
Maybe.
Getting close.
So, um, I think, I think what we really can do is look forward to the fact that once. The plan, the work plan that Melissa has and has been at least endorsed by county admin. Then we can step back as a group and say, okay, now what about all of these other things that we've been talking about? And see how they fit into the work plan. And where there may be opportunities or need to add to the work plan or take some of the work off of Melissa. Um, among the volunteer members of the board. It just seems to me we're, we're in this sort of transition. And as, as Deborah said, all the good work doesn't go away. Um, but we're now in a place where a group of volunteers sitting around with a lot of ideas. Well-intended and very appropriate goals. Now we've got somebody who can help us. Set some priorities and and put some guardrails around this and and identify tasks that maybe Melissa doesn't have to do, but members of the board. I'll stop there. I kept calm.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, the, the question moving forward is how we can do that in a. In a successful way, so we all are pushing in a similar direction. Um. And I guess, I mean, my, my frustration is, is not with you at all, Melissa. It's not with you, Melody, or the commission. It's really just with. Making. Sure that the work we put into strategy is in concert with. The other entities that are needed to make it actionable. Um. And I don't, I just don't want us to be.
About saying this, so please don't take this wrong, but why, why do that? Statue or whatever that um, Deborah just explained was. Really, most counties are R C G and R C O G, and I'm confused too. So that's why, but I'm like. If that's what the task is, let's get it done. And that's what our task is. Now granted, I do, I mean. Email you my opinion. And I hope you'll take everybody's, because I do think that we all have kind of a heart in this as far as like we want to see.
Here's my response to that, cuz I think that's a very legitimate question. It's a super important question is what's the purpose of this board, right?
Well, it's R C G and R C O G is what I'm hearing.
So that's, I think that's very much a open question, but I think it's a great question. I mean, to me, I can answer that in two different ways. One is by our bylaws, right, which have been approved and do include us. As Deborah mentioned, as having more than just those R C G, R C O G responsibilities. Being an advisory body to Economic Development Staff of the County and to the Commission on Economic Development Matters. So that's, I mean, that's in there. Right? It's been approved by different folks over different time periods. But if it's not relevant today, then, right, then it's still not super helpful. Then I would answer that again, from my own perspective of what I think is important in this county. And in our community. And that is that I, my, my experience has been that. We have not on Economic Development Matters, all been pushing in the same direction. Over the last, the years that I've been observing it and been a part of making some of the decisions, we've done, I think, some really good things. But I think we've also seen places where we couldn't come up with a collaboration with the city to do work on downtown. That's just one example, right? But where there's been areas in which. We have different bodies and different people thinking in very different disparate ways about what we need in terms of economic development as a county. And so if we can, and it's not an easy thing to do, as we're like witnessing right now. But if we can help get everybody pushing in the same direction, to me, that would be a really.
So my suggestion, if we could put it on the next meeting, or I don't know, cuz I'm still learning how all this crap works. But um, can we say, hey, Melissa, do you think you could give us a quick outline? As to what we're thinking, because then we can at least say, yeah, we're going in a direction. And maybe we all kind of agree. And we can kind of give more maybe of our feedback, but at least we have kind of a direction, cuz I agree with you. When this department's over here and the intabs over there, we have all these different directions, but if we can, we can kind of agree on like. Maybe.
I, I agree with that. And I would totally, and I will totally do that. What I can just say from like a historical perspective is. Was involved in the Trail to Tomorrow process. And then once we got the Trail to Tomorrow, we all looked at it and said, there's a lot of good stuff here, but it's not really an actionable plan. So then we all said to ourselves, okay, well, this is a good starting point for that conversation. How can we make this actionable and move it forward? Right? That happened last fall through last winter, right? And then more recently, we've come and said, well, we've got a strategic plan. We have this general plan. That's what we're acting on. And so maybe we should just be revising that or using that as the basis point of conversation. So we started doing that. And now it's like, well, there might not really be appetite for revision of it. So. I, I'm with you. If we wanna start from a new plan, which is Melissa's work plan and use that as a basis for conversation.
Okay, so just to be really, really clear, cuz this is important, because I don't want anyone to have a misunderstanding. The Trail to Tomorrow is not by any standard an economic development strategic plan. I can't do anything with it. It's not structured like an economic development plan. It can't be considered an economic development strategic plan. The one that we have has the structure. And has everything in place, all the pieces and parts to be an economic development strategic plan. As part of what I'm doing in my day to day focus, I'm taking those elements from the T R T and from all, I mean, not sorry. From the Trail to Tomorrow Report. I'm, I'm incorporating all of those things. And by the way, I'm incorporating every conversation that we have ever had in here as a board. About what we think is important and where we think that we need to focus. And what I've said is that framework itself. Provides what I need to be able to do those things, which to me says, hey, that's a pretty good plan. Because it gives flexibility without having the level of granularity that you do have to change it every year or as we learn new things. So what I'm saying is, what I sent out to this board a couple of weeks ago, I guess, was. If I were to make changes to this plan, I would make those updates. That would make it current and relevant and reflects accurately the information of the county as it is today. And if you read my comments, whenever I put in things from the Trail to Tomorrow Report, I would say. And if you asked me, I would add these things from the Trail to Tomorrow Plan, because I think that they're really relevant and really important. If we don't get that passed at commission, it's not gonna hurt my feelings. Because I'm already working every day because I need to. Because I've got meetings and I've got feedback and for me. I, it, it functions well as a strategic plan and I know what the changes and the differences are. And I do know what I think is. Valuable and relevant from the Trail to Tomorrow. And I do know what I've gotten from this group. So I'm good.
So, okay, how about for working title for a moment? Let's call this your work plan. You, 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 you are creating a work plan of things that you wanna do. That you think are important, that fit within the strategic plan and that are needed, okay? And every business and every organization on the planet that, that has ever done anything has um. Uh, they make a plan and they spend all the sweat and tears making it. And then reality comes in and things change a little bit. And their work plan of what they're actually doing might not be totally perfectly in the plan. That's okay. But so I think that what, that what you're talking about is you're telling us what you're gonna be working on. You're, you're, you're taking these different pieces of the. Needs that you see, wherever you're seeing them from, and you're saying, I'm gonna work on those. If you wanna tell us about those and we can say. Yeah, that was really important, that one not so much. And yes, you could do this, but. Do it, maybe add this or whatever. We can in, improve your work plan or, or comment on it. And you can take in it, take or leave our suggestions. Cuz that's what all these advisory boards are doing, is coming up with idea, you know, like I have a certain perspective. Everyone has different perspective and expertise. Our whole purpose is to help you. Do things, make a work plan and execute it in a way that's effective. So it seems like. You, you've got a grip and you've got things going on. And when, when we meet, if you, if part of the meeting is. The grants and the other part might be, here's what I'm working on. And we can say. Great, we think that's great, or we have a few questions about it or whatever, then. We're trying to make your work stronger, better, faster by just adding our perspectives. Uh, so. And, and as far as like. I mean, does that, do you buy that so far? Does that work?
Because there's a practical element, meaning. Of course, like I've been doing it for four weeks now. And by the way, a lot of it comes back to me in the form of, no, that's not the way that the state is heading. Nope, that's not. But then they'll say, but here's this other opportunity over here. And I am saying, oh, my gosh, that's even better. Let's look at that, so.
Well, I don't think it has to be linear. It doesn't have to be linear. It can be iterative. You can be saying, I'm working on this. I just learned that. And we can say, that's cool. What about? This aspect of it. And you can say, yeah, great idea. That fits with what the state said, or no, that's not gonna happen. Like, no, it, it's okay. To, to leave a suggestion on the table, but it just feels like it would help us feel more productive. And more like we were supporting you, Melissa, if you say, this is what I'm doing. Like, that's, that's the point of the staff giving report. To the community. I had to make these five decisions since you people.
But let me tell you something about this environment that makes this unique environment. Even more unique, right? And this is not pushback. This is just transparency. I'm private sector. Executive level, private sector, where I say, this is what we're going to do. And when I say that. I'm responsible to a board. And if we lose money while we do that, guess who the board looks at? I'm in an environment now where I can't share with you literally anything that I did last week. Because I have yet to be able to sit down with Mark and get his approval. And at some point, he's going to need to get commission feedback. Right? So I can share with you my high level thoughts and I've got news for you. It's not gonna come as any surprise. I think that we need to have enhanced trail openings with content and things to be able to push things. Off season, I think, you know, I've got different ideas and different things. Right now, those are my ideas. I can't tell you that that's. I, I don't have approval that that's. So I understand, but what I would say to you is. I value this board. I think that this board has amazing ideas. I think that we have smart people. They have strategic ideas. I hear them loud and clear and they're getting echoed at the state level, the regional level and the federal level. You can ask Deborah, we were sitting in a meeting today where literally I repeated word for word what two members of this board had said. During this meeting as a direction that I would like to go in and get approval to go in. So I'm hearing you. So when you say it's in our bylaws that we advise, consider me advised.
Cuz we're running short on time, but can we, um, for next meeting, like maybe have a plan of like, oh, we want to tighten up our. Our R C G and R C O G, like applicant. And can we maybe put like, we're gonna try to go in the direction of. Whatever we hear back from the commission maybe Mel, maybe you could talk about that. Talk to a few commissioners and. See where you guys wanna kind of go with some of that and dollar wise. Then we have more of a kind of a movement, cuz this is what our plan is at the moment. We have to. I know everybody's like, oh, our hearts are in this little advice, but my point to that is. Really, we still have to stick to this R C G and R C O G. Kinda keep on truckin'.
But we need a strategy for it. And, and we sort of have it. And I guess what I'm just saying is all advisory boards. Make a bunch of comments and suggestions and the staff sometimes says, yeah, no, we're not doing that. Or a, a, a different board. I mean, I know, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that it's okay for us to come, to have a conversation about some things. That you don't agree with. It's like, if we're gonna be productive at all, we're gonna make some suggestions that fall outside the window. So I'm just saying. We don't have to behave linearly like we say this, you do this, whatever. You're, you're doing your job. We're here to help. You can tell us what you can tell us. We can comment on it. You can say, yeah, that's irrelevant, or you can say, great idea. Either way, what we should be doing because. And then that conversation, when you say, yeah, that's not gonna happen or great idea. That sort of informs the strategy for the grants. You know, like if we're, if we're saying we're going this direction, we're looking at this, this is the biggest need right now. For a long time, the biggest need was housing, so everything was about housing. Now we're moving a little bit past that. What's the next biggest need? Support our local businesses. Are there any ways to do it? Yes. Does the commission agree with all of our ideas? No. Should we still spew them and think about them and see if they're executable? Sure. And then if some of them don't get done, it's not the end of the world. All boards. I mean, I've been on private company boards where. Yeah, the board says, we kinda want you to do this, and the CEO says, that's not gonna be possible. And we say, fine, next idea. You know, it doesn't have to be so perfect. Does that make sense?
Well, we're pretty close to five. Um, there's a lot sort of been thrown out on the table. I think what's clear is that we want to refine. Strategy for next year's R C G, R C O G. I think what came out of the discussion was that we should really be have that. Finished by November, so that there's the possibility of hosting a workshop in December.
Did we have a meeting in December? I don't think we do. So you're just saying host it anyway in December?
Uh, host a workshop for R C G and R C O G potential applicants. So like not part of our regular meetings like this, but rather this is the like. Idea of us interfacing more with applicants ahead of time before they write their application, so that we can guide them more in the process.
That month of that, isn't it?
Well, that's never been done before.
We go to the court before the commission, the actual decision is what, June?
Well, that's, I mean, even that's like up to us, but yeah, we think that June is a good time. The beginning of June is a good time to have that.
December's a hard month to have a. Workshop. That's why I'm like.
And I think having um, possibly at the workshop, and I know we'll continue to talk about that, is having, you know, just like when the chamber had the business. The Women's Business Network, they had, you know, Todd there, they had um, custom fit and all those different things that, that help all these businesses. I'm good. That's all I.
Yeah, Jasmine, go ahead before we close up.
I just wanted to remind you that we did talk about trying to have interviews for um, board positions earlier and. And making sure that we get those, you know, filled by the end of the year as well.
Thanks, Jasmine. So had those, am I right that those have already been posted? Uh, no?
Not, cuz we were gonna have a conversation about how we wanted. To do that. Like, do we want to put a call out for all of them that are coming up? Wanna, and if.
I think we do, probably. But, yeah, because otherwise, we're gonna be in the same position as last time where we have people who are cycling off the board because they're term ends. And we're not prepared to have a replacement come in right away. Um, so it seems to me.
He's sitting here for months. Maybe he doesn't like.
She's making fun of you.
Forrest and I are gonna be sitting here for months. You're trying to find somebody.
Forrest, you, you're not reapplying?
I've had my second term.
Oh, you can only be on this.
I'm turned out.
So yeah, I, I, I agree that just them all together. I mean, and. Then just get a new person for her to cover her, but they have not been advertised yet. But people can still go on there. You can at any point in time go on and. Um, put an application for it.
Yeah, but we, I mean, I think to have a solid process, it'd be better to.
Yeah, so the advertising may usually.
Be advertised.
I would say.
If there's anything you, we can follow up on this, but.
Yeah, if you'll just give me dates when you wanna do interviews and you want them to close and open. I can get that posted.
Okay, yeah, we'll figure out. Oh, let's just email that. There will be three, if I'm not mistaken. Um, Forrest turns out. Jasmine is cycling off and not reapplying. And Melissa's already stepped down from her position on the board. So there, by the, those will, two, one of those is open currently. Two of those will happen at the end of the calendar year. But we can move on like an application process before the end of the calendar year. We don't have to wait until.
And I'm interested in, in, in uh, asking Cory to apply for Jasmine's spot because. You know, he's right now a non-voting member, but he, I mean, it'd be really valuable, Cory, if he would apply for that municipality position.
Thank you. I thi- I think in my capacity, I'll probably not likely be able to leave unless I had, well, I'll take that in consideration. Thank you.
Um, okay, with that, let's, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Um, and we'll, yeah, work on next month's calendar.